Special meeting, Thursday, July 12, 2018 to order. Amber, roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Dowell.
Present.
Commissioner Narwood.
Present.
Vice Chair Wasden.
Here.
Commissioner, Chairman Williams.
Here.
And Commissioner Dowling, absent. Commissioner Masters, absent.
Okay, good, thank you. I don't think we have anybody in the public, so here to make public comments. So we'll go on to the next item. And we are going to amend our agenda to facilitate our folks here from the city. We will go in and instead of having new business, we'll go to old business first. And first, I'm sorry, before we do that, let's get the approval amendments from the last meeting real quick. Anybody have any additions? I had one addition. I think our P&amp;Z department, you were here, Baron, weren't you at the meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we need to add your name to that list. Any other additions, detractions, corrections to the minutes from the last meeting of June Do you see it under item number two? Okay, you okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll have a motion to...
I move we approve the minutes for the planning and zoning commission meeting held June 18, 2018.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion. Vice Chairman Wasden and Commissioner Dowell seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll get on to old business. The first item is ZO 18-009, amendment to section 404, general provisions, height regulations concerning a zoning ordinance text amendment to section 404 H3. Scott, you want to, or Baron, just quick review of what we were discussing and what the change is, basically. It's pretty, I think it's on page two, just in case anybody has any questions. We had a, we have some, we have the fire chief here and our building inspector is here, so fire away, just real quick, the change you want to make.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I don't know exactly all the details of the discussions as I read, but what we're looking at doing is currently all of our zoning districts allow two and a half stories up to 35 feet or a conditional use permit. That's where building height restrictions end within the zoning ordinance. We've had internal staff discussions with building department, fire department. Basically, to clarify even more, if you go over a certain height, they want it to be non-combustible materials. A lot of life safety issues in that for those requirements. And by making these changes, putting it in the zoning ordinance, then it's solidified. There's no question about it. There's really no room for gray areas on, well, we do this, can we do non-combustible or can we do wood frame? So, Fire Chief is here to give his take on it.
All right.
And there's our building inspector to kind of clarify from therein what they're looking for on this.
Okay, that sounds good. Fire Chief?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioner?
Yes.
Mike Kurgandl, Fire Chief. The reason behind this comes strictly the, by request of the fire department. Certainly, and I even brought tonight a little background, you know, within the building code, which, building height is actually regulated in the building code. Fire code is more of a maintenance code for a lot of the things that go on from the building code. Building code tells you how to build it. The fire code tells you how you have to maintain it and the fire safety and throws in other things, requirements that are fire safety related and exiting related, those type of things, but it's actually in there. The, the building code certainly allows, building, based upon building types, the ability to build structures greater than two and a half stories, depending on the type of construction is. The problem we have within the city of Cottonwood and why I would like to see this, this changed is because while the building code would allow a building to be, of certain types of buildings to be built greater than three stories out of combustible construction, the problem we have in the city of Cottonwood is, because of many restrictions, mostly financial, we have, our ladder apparatus won't even begin to reach, it'll barely reach three stories, and it really doesn't even reach three stories. So I don't have the ability to rescue people from a structure bigger than three stories with the apparatus and the equipment I have. The second thing is I just don't have the manpower. As you can imagine, when you start building a building, we have some three-story, and I'll just use this anecdotal, but we have three-story senior living facilities in our community.
Yes.
And they're built out of, I worry all the time, they're built out of combustible construction, but they're fully sprinkled. But the reality is, I look at and say, when you add another story, you're adding 25% more occupancy. We can barely handle, in fact, it'd be questionable if we could handle them, but the amount of timeframe that takes to try to rescue people from that and those, we need to, what we're looking for is to, to provide, if you allow, first of all, the question is always if it's going to be allowed anyway through conditional use permit, but if you allow a building larger than three story or taller than three stories, we need the added, we want the added ability to provide us additional protection through the construction type itself. The sprinklers are great and they add a great deal, but the problem is the sprinkler system, like anything else, can be defeated. If you looked at the news last night, I don't know if that building was sprinkled or not, but what happens is if part of the roof collapsed in, it will render the sprinkler system essentially non-useful in the rest of the building, because once the pipes break, it doesn't. So what we're asking for here is if a building is built greater than, than three stories or 40 feet in height, that it would be built of non-combustible construction, and it'll still require the sprinklers and that, but it also provides a second layer of protection. Should the sprinklers not work, then I don't have to worry as much about the, the structure itself burning. We still have rescue and other considerations, but I don't have to worry about the building coming down around my ears nearly as quickly as I do a frame construction building at that height. So, I, it's, it's, this is a, a, strictly for the safety of the occupants as well as for the, the safety of the firefighters, and that's why I'm asking for this.
Any questions?
No. No, sir.
Just one question. When we talk about buildings that have come through, there's obviously not a lot that are three stories and above, but one of the questions we asked last month was, I know just down the block, there is the building we approved, gosh, within the last year that's three stories that they haven't started on. Do you know, in reviewing that, is that third story built from non-combustible materials?
To my, to my knowledge, it isn't, we're not asking, and I can't, I can't address that because I don't know exactly what building we're talking about.
It's a, it's a fill-in spot right down here next to, I forget what...
Oh, I know what you're talking about. It would not be, it wouldn't be affected by...
No, I understand that.
This, because we're only asking for above the 40 feet and the, the three-story thing. I, I, I don't know what the construction, I haven't seen the plans on it, so I don't know what the construction type is on that building.
Okay.
I would presume it's probably five, but I, but I can't address a, a specific building that would have to be...
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, from our discussion last week, like I said, we obviously don't see a lot of these, so it, as I reflect back, that's the only one that comes to mind, so I didn't know if that had been, something that had been discussed or not.
We, I'll put it, put it candidly, we're, we're in a place now where we're looking always to the future. We have a number of three-story buildings now in our community. They're built of combustible construction. Fortunately, to my knowledge, they're all sprinkled, because they didn't meet the water flow requirements before we had the sprinkler. It's now we have a sprinkler, and so it makes it a lot easier, but with the, the sprinkler and this, but, but because of water supply, they are sprinkled at three stories, but we still see them, you know, they're still, if the sprinkler system's down, it's still a great big fire load that we, more than we can handle. We just want to make sure that for the future, the only four-story building we have right now in town is the hospital, which is already non-combustible construction. It had to be built that way. Having had a fire in there when it was in the construction phase, it taught us real quick that, you know what, we could get overwhelmed with our resources very quickly. And fortunately, being non-combustible, it didn't go that far. We were able to control that fire in the construction phase and without it doing a great deal of damage because of the, because, it still costs a lot of money to them because it burned off the veneer and the different things that it did, but it, it provided that. That was kind of a wake-up to us and say that, but before we have more people wanting to build larger buildings, we'd like to make sure that it's, that we have that provision in there to protect those people.
Right.
So, I hope I answered the question...
Yep, that's...
...the best I can.
Okay.
If it were up to me and I could turn the clock back, I would say I'd like everything over, you know, everything, or two stories to be non-combustible, but, but that genie's out of the bottle at this point in time.
I have one question, Mike. I'm just curious, if you build a three-story building, you can use wood frame, but if you go 40 feet or above, the entire building needs to be non-combustible?
Has to be non-combustible.
Why, why is it that way? Why isn't just the additional above 30 non-combustible and the rest of it could be wood frame? I'm just curious as to why...
And, and I'll, I'll give you, I can give you, maybe the best example of that is, because, go back to the towers when they fell. The fire was at the mid-level, but everything fell down above that. So even if, so what I guess I'm trying to say is, if the fire's on the second floor and it collapses, the fact that it's non-combustible on the levels, on level floor four doesn't really help those people when it collapses because the fire's there. So you need to have the, you need the non-combustible all the way up, because if the fire's on the second floor, you still have those people above that level that have to be rescued or you have the collapse factor in that. I hope I answered that to the best. If it's all non-combustible, at that point in time, I'd get, if you build, the first three stories combustible and the four stories non-combustible, the problem is if the fire's on the third floor, the people above that are still trapped on the fourth floor because that floor is burning because it got into the structure itself. Whereas if we can contain the fire below that level, it gives us the ability to rescue the people above that level.
Thank you.
I hope, like I say, I hope I answered that the best I can.
Mr. Dowling.
Chief, I just have one question. Do we have any fire apparatus, ladder apparatus within the region that's...
We have, there's, there's a ladder truck in Sedona, there's a ladder truck in Camp Verde. The ladder truck to Camp Verde is 85 feet. It would be, because of the setback from the building, you gotta remember you got collapse zones and how far you have to set the truck away and do that, it would be marginal on that one. The problem is the timeframe to get them here.
Right.
Rescue considerations in a fire situation, your rescue considerations are everything, you know, viable people are within usually the first five to 10 minutes of a fire, and that's just the realities of it, you know, depending on the size of the fire and what it is. And they're away. And then also you have to, you know, it's a matter of staffing. The ladder truck in, in Camp Verde isn't staffed all the time, so you have to, you know, if they're out on another call, it may not get staffed. Same problem if it's out on a call in Sedona or their truck, other truck is out. It, it's just, we, I'll put it in the, in the sense that ISO doesn't give us any credit for ladder trucks that aren't within our immediate, like in our immediate area here when they rate buildings for, for that. They, we don't get any credit for ladder trucks up there. In fact, we don't get credit now for our ladder truck, it's too old for it being a ladder company at this point in time.
Okay, thanks, sir.
And it's only, the current one we have's 55 feet. It just won't, it won't even get close to a four-story.
Okay. The question I've had all along is, it doesn't make any sense to me. And it's part of our potential change here, is what is a two and a half, why, why do we have two and a half story buildings? We just approved the one down the street, when they hadn't, you know, it still wasn't a 35-foot limit, but it was, it was three-story. So what, what would make that, just more people on that third floor or what's a two and a half story, I guess? I get, I know in Phoenix, they build some apartment houses, they recess the, the first level down four feet, then they go up, but I haven't seen that in Cottonwood.
I may be the wrong person to, to address that one, you know, Steve is a researcher, but I will give you just an opinion on it. Two and a half stories is what's in the current code, and that's why we didn't, we didn't modify that from what it is right now. It says two and a half stories are 35 feet. What is a half story? The city attorney says he has an opinion on that, I'll let him...
Well, my opinion is, so what you do is, is you'll look at, and I don't think any of us have been here long enough to know why our code reads the way it does. It was probably taken from a template somewhere else. So the first thing we do is, is look and see if that's a defined term or concept, and in our zoning ordinance, it's not. By the way, hello for everybody, for those folks I haven't been down here and visited with before. So since we don't have that defined, what, what the courts tell us is we, we look for the plain and ordinary meaning of a term. And, yeah, we, we discussed an hour ago, you know, what is a story, and there seems to be no industry standard, there's no building code standard or fire code standard. So the next place a lawyer would go to is the dictionary, and, and I did. And, and the dictionary defines it, and I'll, I'll pull it up again. I'm sorry, I didn't notice whether or not this would come up.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, please indulge. And I'm pulling up. It, it's something about, it's where, instead of a full floor, it is replaced by a dormer, where, where it's still a livable space, but the full wall is replaced by, by dormers. And I'm, I'm pulling up the other, the kind of fable and tale definition of story. I'll go back and see how I got to it the last time. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I looked for the definition of a half story, and Merriam-Webster does define it.
Cape Cod, back east, they do that, stick a dormer in.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's an eastern kind of a thing, yeah. So, a half story according, well, no, I didn't want truly, because that's not, it's not, here it is. The definition of a half story is an uppermost story, which is usually lighted by dormer windows and in which a sloping roof replaces the upper part of the front.
That's what it is, sir.
So, in the absence of anything better than that, I, I think that's our working definition of what a half story is.
Can that be changed, though?
Yes, absolutely.
Why can't that be changed, the three stories?
Absolutely.
I guess the common sense, that's an eastern concept, as Commissioner Narwood came from New Jersey, they have a lot of houses with dormers.
Cape Cod's.
Cape Cod's, yeah. It's not, you know, but I know the condominium we had down the street, that was a discussion we had, it was, it was a three-story building, so I guess, I don't like to force people into conditional use permits for us to come before us, just to get by that definition, but if there's a real public safety issue, I guess, then...
There's not, but I can kind of see, if you just use the definition there, while it's not a popular building type in Cottonwood...
Right.
If somebody built a two and a half, a two-story house, that they then enclosed the attic, you know, how, where the dormer is, that would be considered two and a half stories. And the question is, should that, should that require, should that be allowed without requiring a conditional use permit as long as it's under 35 feet? And that's a question for you guys to decide, but that's the kind of thing it's looking at. If you go to three stories, obviously, it's greater than that, it has to come in for a conditional use permit. But that's not a common building type here, but I think that that's probably where this came from.
Well, yeah.
That's a very popular building type in some parts of the country.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't disagree. I, I guess I'm looking from your standpoint.
From my standpoint, that's why we went with it, and, and from my, again, from my standpoint, we're saying more than three stories or 40 feet.
Oh, I agree.
Yours says two and a half or 35 feet. My, my rationale behind it is greater than three stories or 40 feet is, it's, it's from the safety of what I can reach and what I can do.
All right, so...
So I don't really have an opinion on the two and a half story thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at, Steve, we can get up here, talk about the building code. Is it in, in our building code, the two and a half story?
No, in our adopted, Mr. Chair, and in...
It's just in our planning, it's in our zoning ordinance.
It's in the zoning ordinance, and, and our, our building inspector has actually been researching and consulting about this, and, and there is no generally accepted definition of, of a half story. It's, it's not a term. It's in wide use in terms of regulations, but it's not commonly defined anywhere that we can find.
I just, hey, it just makes more sense to me, while we're making this a recommendation to city council to amend this statute, that we change that two and a half story to three as long as we don't go over 35 feet.
And what I'd, what I'd suggest you consider doing is, is you can certainly have staff look into that further, but as the chief mentioned, the, the concept of, of a half story in the, or two and a half stories permeates the zoning ordinance. So, so we'd have to, you know, scrub it. What, again, as the chief said, we used it in the context of this proposed amendment because it's everywhere else.
Yeah.
You know, as the baseline, and then we built off that, but the intent was neither to change it or to keep it, but to make this other change that the chief's talking about.
All right. What's the definition of everywhere else?
I defer to Mr. Jackson.
Can, can I, can I suggest, you know, he's here for this specific reason. We're kind of getting off topic into where this comes up in our planning and zoning documentation. That's a separate issue.
No, not really. It's part of this, part of the change.
But to go back and to try and change two and a half to three is a different issue.
Well, if it's going to cause a lot of scrubbing and so forth, I'm agreeing.
It's a different issue from what's before us right now, and it is, we're not talking about changing the, the, we're talking about changing this section right here, and it does say two and a half or 35 feet, and that's why the building down the road was approved because it is under 35 feet. So, the, I think we're getting hung up on a two and a half story definition when we have a definition as well in there that says 35 feet. And if we want to change two and a half stories, I'm open to that, but for this purpose, I think we're just trying to get this put in place, and that's why we're meeting here tonight, so that these guys can move on. And if we want to do something further, I'm trying to say let's not belabor at this point because I think we're all in agreement with what we're...
I'm just asking the Fire Chief from a safety standpoint, if that really makes an issue, and there might be an issue that I wasn't aware of.
No.
And, and we are asking for it to go to the council, if you can make these things happen, but if there's some scrubbing and we need to do some more research, I would agree with Vice Chairman, well, this, you know, the more important thing is the, is the four-story.
Yeah, that, that is for me. I, can I only throw out one thing? Just be careful, you know, when you keep talking about, you know, it's two and a half stories, if you're going to go, you're going to, and this is more theirs, but you're going to want to go anything more than two stories, because right now, you don't want to say three stories, because now you're going to allow everything to come to the three-story without a conditional use permit. That's, that's what this was trying to avoid. This was trying to keep things, it basically, you build a two-story building, but you've got a little bit of a, but if you've got an attic or something you're using, staff could be approving, and I don't want to speak out of school here, but staff could say, okay, that fits that definition of the two and a half, but if you were going to build anything of three stories, it has to come in for a conditional use permit in all of the different, in every single one of them you have. From the fire department standpoint, and that's what you asked for, from my standpoint, we, whether I'm comfortable entirely with it, I'm comfortable that when you approve a three-story building, that it can be combustible construction. Two-story, you don't even have to come in, you know, that's pretty much a given. But when it comes in for a three-story, when you allow it, most of the time when you're allowing a three-story building in our community, it's because of a specific purpose, and most of them seem to be residential things, which I, again, I'm not crazy about them being, but we, but with the sprinklers and that, we try to provide for the best fire safety we can.
Okay.
My concern is, when it gets to a four-story building, and that's the only reason I'm here, is because when it gets to a four-story building, we need to, we want some added protection, which is making the building itself non-combustible as well as sprinkled and those things.
Okay.
So, and that's as far as I can address that.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I...
No, that, you did a very good job. Thank you very much. I think that adds a lot to it, and we'll proceed. Steve, you want any...
Was there any additions? I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, no, you're, I think we're good. We'll talk, have Steve come up maybe, and I, I don't know if there's any other questions we need to ask, but...
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Council members. I'm Steve Jackson, I'm building inspector here for the city of Cottonwood. So, if you have any questions on this, Chief covered a lot of it. I talked with Commissioner Hart earlier about this half story, and we discussed the possibilities, and a lot of them came up with Chief here. We discussed a mezzanine to be considered a half story, but the inside of a tall building that's 35 feet high, you actually only have two stories, but you could have a mezzanine that you could walk around up there. It wouldn't be considered a story, it would be open on, on one side.
Yeah. My, my concern on that, just that really, real quick, we'll get over, we'll get through that for another day, but what it says is, if you go over two and a half stories, you go over that, unless you're in a PAD, you have to come back before us for a conditional use permit hearing.
That is correct.
And I'm just trying to facilitate people not having to do that particularly. We just approved a new apartment complex up on 89A, it was in a PAD, they had three-story buildings in it. I mean, what's, you know, why would somebody else building another building somewhere else have to come back, particularly a commercial building or a par, it's not in a PAD, but it's an R3, R4 zone and have to come before us to get a conditional use permit because they're, they got some three-story buildings in it.
I don't want to speak for somebody else, especially somebody that's not here, but I think the city management's position would be that three, three-story buildings are unusual enough for Cottonwood in a rural area, that they do warrant a little extra review, whether it's, whether the commission's comfortable being the one, it's the obvious body to perform that review, but if it's something that the commission's not comfortable with, perhaps, you know, either staff or the council could.
It just seems like we, in some area, now we are reviewing things, the planned area developed, we do have design review, which we look at pretty hard also. It just seems like it maybe it's an extra step, that maybe we don't need to really have, but we won't, I agree with Vice Chairman, we won't, we won't further beat that to death tonight, but I don't have any other questions. Any commissioners have any other further questions for Steve? I think we've pretty well covered the subject.
Okay.
What they're asking and so forth. Okay, with that, I don't see anybody in the public for further comment. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate you coming tonight. And Fire Chief, thank you, sir. All right. I'll close the floor for any further discussion. Now Commissioners, Mr. Hart.
I'm sorry to get back to this two and a half story thing, but if we are going to have that in our code, we should have a definition of it. If a professional, a real professional comes into the city and looks at that and says, what does that mean? And their answer is, we're going to use, we don't have a definition, because in the International Building Code, they don't define half stories at any point. And so if we're going to call something two and a half stories and put a requirement on it, I think we should have it defined.
Right.
And maybe not settling at this meeting, but somewhere along the line, we need to...
We need the staff to research this and call something.
We need, yeah, we need staff to come up with a recommendation to get verbiage that's accurate and that relates to the code.
Yeah, that would help everybody, I think. That would be good. Any, any other comments about the non-combustible term?
I think the idea of the non-combustibles is absolutely given for this city. I think that, you know, it's something that absolutely should be done.
Yes. Mr. Dowling?
No comment.
Okay, so, but everybody seems to be pretty much favorable, so I'll entertain a motion.
All right.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
I move that we approve ZO 18-009 amendment to section 404, general provision, height regulations, and with the following stipulations. Actually, sorry, I'm lost in my own.
No, yeah, no, there...
I don't think there is any.
No, just as, as...
Just recommended that we submit that to council for approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second to motion.
Committee. Commissioner Norwood, second to motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You'd absolutely carry. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very, very much.
A procedural reminder, um, the, the legislature, uh, has recently passed a statute that comes into effect August third, um, that says, beginning that date, all your votes will have to be taken by roll.
Okay, we'll do that.
You'll have to, the minutes will have to identify, um, who voted and how they voted.
All right, we'll do, so we'll start that in our next meeting.
Yeah, we have one more meeting.
Well, that you're in August, yes. All right. Well, uh, we'll procedurally go down that. All right, on to the next item, which, um, we'll back up here and go to executive session and to do that, I will officially adjourn this meeting.
Well, before you do, Mr. Chair, that, this is here in, in case either staff or the commission would like to. This is, this is something that's your prerogative.
All right.
And we had this on the agenda, in case there are any concerns as we dealt with either prior to or, or now, now that we have, um, the, the process by which you, you dealt with this last item, or if you have any other general concerns or questions about process that would be appropriate.
Well, we, we, we wanted to sort of discuss our internal processing in the meeting and, and the various steps, the procedures and so forth. So I think I would, I'd be more comfortable to do that in executive session and will temporarily adjourn.
And before we do that, the, you know, the reason why we put this in was because we had some, we've got new members and we've got two of those new members not here. I'm thinking, wouldn't it be more appropriate to do this in our next meeting? So we're not, there's a couple old people here who already know this, so the, for the benefit of everybody, maybe put that in our next agenda is a suggestion.
I agree.
I agree.
I, I tend to, I think that's a good point. We are...
Well, and, and I, I can't speak to Ms. Masters, but, but Mr. Dowling has, has been in more executive sessions with me than I, I think he, he'd care to admit.
Yeah, right, yeah. And pretty much procedure-wise, but it would be good for today. Anybody else?
Uh, it, it doesn't matter to me. I've, I'm fairly familiar with it through my previous life, so...
All right, we can do that. Um, that's, uh, August sixteenth, do we have any read on everybody? I think, I know, and our new commissioner said he's gonna be back. Uh, you haven't heard from Commissioner Masters though, have we? One way or the other.
I didn't today, no.
All right, she may very well be here.
Or have to be for August, right? Not, not our upcoming meeting.
You know, yeah, that might be good, August, to talk about, uh, the new voting procedures and so forth.
I'll have to check my, my schedule. It, it may actually be September when I can come back down.
All right. Well, we could do, you know, yes.
Oh, I, I guess...
All right, okay.
Um, I would just go to suggest, since we have the city attorney, why don't, why don't we ask some, why don't you ask some questions since you're here and then you'll go do that with the new commission?
All right, okay.
Just a suggestion.
Uh, does anybody have any questions, or city attorney, other than the two and a half story? I think we definitely would like to see that researched, and I agree with Commissioner Hart, maybe we need a, some kind of definition that would be good, particularly the architects. He's an architect. You come to town, you want to build a building, whatever, unless we're going to amend that, uh, to go to just three stories and not worry about conditional use permits unless you go over those limits. But, uh, it'd be good to have staff, I think, do some more research and, and talk, um...
When you say research, Mr. Chairman, just a definition addition, right?
Well, we want to define, yeah, we, if we're gonna stick with two and a half stories, then we want to define what a half, two and a half story, you know, what a half story is, since there doesn't seem to be any common definition out there.
I think if you look around, this is just from my experience of rolling around the city as much as I do, um, some of the older historic houses are two and a half.
Yeah.
The Willard House is two and a half.
Yes.
If you look at it, it's two and a half, so that's probably where the basis of this came from, was because then you did two and then you did that.
Right.
Those windows that came out and that was your half-story, so...
That was your half-story.
Those historic houses are probably where that two and a half came from, because that's what they did then.
I don't know if we can, so it might be something for a further discussion then, you know, at one of our future meetings. It's nothing critical. I don't think it's, you know, it's not a time thing that we have to worry about. Anybody else have any...
Yeah, I have one question. Um, just out of curiosity, when you look at the map of the town, there's a lot of individual pockets of, of zoning, if I remember correctly. Let's just use an example, it's all yellow and then you see a red one over here and a blue one over here. And those represent different zones.
Right.
Is it possible to think about for future planning, you know, master plan, to reincorporate those pockets back into the surrounding one, the majority one? But then yet grandfather those particular uses, but don't allow, you know, so you can avoid having, let's say, a vacant lot in the middle of town and then all, and, and it's light industrial, as an example, or it's, I'm using only as an example, right? If you incorporate that back into whatever the bigger zoning is, let's say it's residential, just as an example, right? You say, okay, now it's all residential, but whatever's there is grandfathered, but the old property that isn't developed would have to revert back into the majority that surrounds it. Is that, is that something that can be done?
Well, it's...
Not that we should, but I was just always wondered about that.
And there's a, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Norwood, a bit of a process issue here. We, we, we haven't agendized this kind of broad-ranging discussion. What we agendized, what we put on the agenda was, was a possible executive session about process. So if, if we got in, into that, we'd be, we'd be way off agenda.
Right.
And that would concern me.
I understand that, I'm sorry.
But it's something, but in, by way of a, of a process comment, that's the sort of thing that, that I think staff is more than happy to take your call about, uh, before a meeting, or you can consult with the chair, he can get it on an agenda. Um, there's certainly a way to discuss it, so I'm not, I don't mean to put you off.
I meant from a legal standpoint, is, can you, can that legally be done?
It, again, it's something that, that in order to have the discussion here at a public meeting, there are things predicate to that.
Yeah. Got it.
Okay. I think that, that answered our question. We didn't go on the executive session, we have legal questions. Um, um, so I would go on to our next item, discussion items, I don't think we have any for tonight. Informational reports, uh, uh, we were all, the staff and I were at the city council meeting, Commissioner Hart was there also, Monday night. They discussed three items in a special, in their study session that have been before us and come up again and probably will come back before us. Uh, one was the music in, in Old Town as to what the area was confined to, and I think they've seemed, it appeared to me that they seem to, uh, be in favor of, will consider it down the road, I'm sure, uh, being throughout the entertainment district, no matter what the zoning is, if as long as they're in that new established entertainment zone, which stands all along clear through town to, to eighty-nine A and all along Main Street clear up around the curve here. Um, and then there was the monument, they were trying to get an idea on monument signs as to...
Wayfinding signs.
Wayfinding signs. We had talked about that just in general before, um, to get an idea. I, they seem to be pretty much in line with, I think, what our thinking was when we were sort of discussing, what kind of signs to point away to somebody that's off Main Street, what kind of sign would, signage would we like to sort of see? And I think you've got some direction. What was the third?
Dark skies ordinance.
Huh?
Dark skies ordinance.
All the dark skies ordinance and, and what you need to do to, to get that adopted and, uh, um, so, uh, I'm not sure if that's something we'll be involved in down the road or not, but...
Actually, commission approved that and city council had some questions, so we answered those.
All right, all right, so...
So that would be going directly to the council.
Okay, so what we approved is going forward, probably.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
And wayfinding would be coming to, before you.
Yeah, because we had, yeah.
And also, uh, music and C-one zone will come back to you.
Yeah, okay. Cause that had been left wide open, as I recall. We were all sort of confused as to where, where this was supposed to be and what was gonna be and, and, uh, pre and us in the city council, we were having a little bit of a disconnect, I think, there for a while. So that sounds good. Um, any other informational reports, Baron?